This is Grand Forks City Council's Committee of the Whole for Monday, January 24th, 2022, under item one, call to order, 1.1, welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Under discussion items, item 2.1, Special Events Program Annual Report. Ms. Richards, good evening.
Good evening. It is that time of year when we hear from our re-grant program administrators. First up, we have, excuse me, Julie Riggs from the Convention Visitors Bureau to talk about what was done with 2021 money, and then the request is to authorize them to administer the program again for 2022. So with that, I would like to invite Julie to come up and talk.
Ms. Riggs, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and talk about the event funding program. As you all know, Visit Greater Grand Forks took the program over in 2017, so we've been managing it for a few years now. And at that time, we combined it with the program that we were running, our event funding program. It made sense. The programs were tied very closely together. I served on the city's Special Event Funding Committee, so it was an easy and seamless transition. As always, the purpose remains the same as the program, promoting Grand Forks as a regional entertainment, recreation, and tourism center, economic impact, of course, draw both local and non-local attendees. We want events that make an impact on quality of life, and of course, we like to see those events that are multiple days because hopefully that keeps people staying in our community longer. We do also give some special consideration to homegrown events, or those events coordinated by local organizations. Then we know a majority of those funds are staying right here in our community, and the more likely that those events will repeat each year. Our process is pretty simple. We review applications four times a year, in January, April, July, and October, so people can apply at any time throughout the year, as long as their event is at least a month out from the deadline. Our committee is made up of four members, including myself. They are all either past or current CVB, excuse me, Visit Greater Grand Forks Board members. I still do it. And we do not take any administrative fee from the program. Since we were managing one ourselves, it just made sense to combine the two, and there was no reason to do that. The process, people are asked to fill out an application, provide a budget and a marketing plan, as well as a ZIP code report for the year previous, so we can track where attendees are coming from. We do want their event schedule, and of course, how the event is being managed. We do try to make it as easy as possible for event organizers. A lot of these people are volunteers and not familiar with grant writing, so we do make it pretty simple. In 2021, we awarded $178,250 for 2021 events. This included the funds that we rolled over from 2020 as well. The projected direct spending impact from that was over $6.9 million, and again, that's the direct spending impact. So that's funds, costs that are attributed to those people coming or living in Grand Forks, going out to eat, gas, shopping, those types of things. That is not the economic impact number with the multiplier. So far for 2022, we have $43,000 committed for events. We do have a meeting on Wednesday. I have 22 applications with over $200,000 in requests for events happening still this year. Plus, we will see more requests in April, July, and even October. Of course, in addition to these funds, we have other programs that we manage at Visit Greater Grand Forks that help out event organizers. We have our Enticement Fund, which we already have committed $40,000 for this year. These are events that we had bid on in the past, so we had promised those funds during that bid process. We also have our in-kind services program. Typically, in a year, we give out hundreds of thousands of dollars, a typical year. Last year wasn't a typical year. A typical year, we'd give $250,000 to $300,000 a year in in-kind services. Those are concession vouchers for athletes, VIP gifts, registration assistance, signage, you name it. If you need it for an event, we try to find a way to provide it. And I'd just like to wrap up. It has been discussed in the past, hey, maybe we should put a little bit more into this program. I would really encourage that, if at all possible, at any time. Our budget, of course, has taken a big hit in the last two years because of COVID and less people traveling, so it's, right now, harder and harder for us to put more funds into that program. And the requests are getting more and larger requests for funds due to increasing costs. I've been involved with city special events programming probably for about the last 20 years, because I think I served on the committee for 13 or 14 years before we took it over, and the amount has usually, has been around the same, somewhere between that $125,000, $128,000. So if there's ever that opportunity, I would graciously accept it and encourage it.
What's the number, Julie? What do you think, panel council?
Really? I'd like to see it doubled.
You want me to go further with that?
We have the two requests.
Right.
Without having, letting them know what the right number is.
Well, so when you're looking at tonight, I know you have a request for an event. That event organizer is also, is also coming to us. I know firsthand, we can't award anywhere close to what they need, not just what they want, but with most of these requests, we are unable to even get to where they need at this point. You're, you know, you're looking at conventions, festivals, performing arts, and like I said, the requests are getting more, more often, and more of them, and it is, it is hard to provide that assistance at this point. I, $250,000, I understand is doubling it and extensive, but it, it could take us a lot further.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Riggs?
Mr. Weber? Not for Ms. Riggs so much, but Todd or Maureen, how long has this fund been, how long have we been funding events in Grand Forks?
President Sandy, Councilman Weber, I'd have to look for certain on this, but I, maybe Todd knows the answer to this, but I want to say it goes back to the early 2000s when we started funding events and arts. And we've always tied it to sales tax, and we've generally increased each year by the amount that we estimate sales tax increases.
I believe I've served on the committee since 2002, 2003, so, and it was in place before then.
I think City Council President, Hal Gershman, was a big promoter of this, and I think we have plateaued the funding over the years, and so that if we're really going to move the needle, there was always this sense, and I kind of pushed back on, well, let's put a value of a mil, and I dissuaded that because we're using sales tax monies. But, you know, if you want to look at a value of a mil, Ms. Riggs just said $250,000. I think a value of a mil is between $240,000 and $250,000. And so, let's not compare the two, but if you, if you got to $250,000, and maybe did an amendment this year to get it to a higher number, and then we would look to fund it more next year. And again, sales tax has grown more than we anticipated. That's why we're really cautious, but we've, we've had a more productive year last year on sales tax, and hopefully that continues this year. And these have a really great return on investments, as Julie just said there. It's quite incredible what we do, and, and if we can move these events with better facilities, there's no telling what this community could do to really move the economic development needle.
Right. There's a fantastic return on investment directly, and it's, it's difficult to measure the impact for workforce development, quality of life for our citizens. It seems a small investment for the tremendous benefit we get. So if, if I were to make a motion in support of tonight's proposal, along with a consideration to take the funding to, to $250,000, is that an appropriate motion for what we're looking at?
Council President Sandy and Mr. Weber, I think if you did that this evening, we have, as administration, up to $50,000, but I think that's a good move. So I think it's, right now, we're funding up to, in and around $130,000. And so if you move that to the $250,000, or, you know, plus or minus the $120,000, and then maybe with these two requests that are going to be coming, both with robotics and the concert series, what I would do, based upon city council final approval, here in early February, we could provide those funds to Visit Greater Grand Forks, and maybe they could be in the situation of granting additional funds, because they've already, my understanding is of the robotics group, they've already provided $10,000 in funding this year. I suspect they're going to, I've heard Julie say that the Hugo's Concert Series is going to be up for review.
Yes, there, it's one of the applications that we're reviewing this week.
So in lieu of you guys picking winners and losers, otherwise, the concern is that in every two, every two weeks, we're going to have a new event up here. I think it's a better move, Council President Sandy and council members, to provide more funding to Julie and her organization, and then have these organizations go back, and in both of these cases, they'd be asking for additional funds, because they're already in the queue of either receiving or up, up to, having an opportunity to get funds.
Very good. It's a complicated motion, but I'll make that. Yes, please.
Yeah, can, can you try to help us with the, could I, could I make a, Mr. Weber, could I make a suggestion?
Sure, Mr. Sandy.
I would, I would suspect that this, we would need two meetings to discuss this anyway. How about staff bring to the next committee of the whole, or I don't care, directly to council next week, their recommendation for not only how much, but the funding source? And then, I'm all for increasing the, the arts, arts and events funding, for that matter, and I think we should look at the arts funding as well. And so, I would, I would recommend, but if you want to make the motion, that's fine.
No, fantastic. Actually, I was making a joke about the complication of the motion. It was, it was long and involved, but I think it's, it's actually fairly straightforward, and something that I think could be brought to next week's meeting, and so that'd, that'd be my motion. Yeah.
Great. And so you're moving approval that we approve the Visit Greater Grand Forks to continue the arts re-granting program.
Events. More events.
Thank you. Events, yes, thank you. The events, the events re-granted program, and
Plus an appropriate increase.
Direct staff to come back next week with the appropriate increase in funding source.
Very good.
Is there a second on that? Ms. Docler, seconds. Mr. Vean, did you have a comment?
Yeah, Julie, we had $178,250 that was committed. That's not the total cost of those events. Did we match them like 50/50? What would be the total amount that probably went? Any idea?
Well, I, I could certainly get to that number, what the total request is, because we track that, just like we track what we awarded. If I had to guess, I would say maybe a fourth of what was requested.
A fourth, somewhere in that ballpark, because even at that, I mean, there was, we helped make them happen, but a majority of the money came from outside of.
Right, absolutely. And, and to that point, you know, when people do submit their applications, I get asked very often, you know, what should we request? And I say, show us what you need. And some people are very good about doing that, and others, you know, we, we will get a request for a 50-person convention that wants $15,000, you know, some of those, but for the most part, these event organizers are not requesting amounts that are unreasonable.
Yeah, and I think it's, it's what we, it takes to kick, get them over the edge to be able to actually happen.
Absolutely.
And still, a majority of the money is coming.
And our, and our events in our community are really, are attractions, for, for a big part of our attraction base, and what gets visitors here, and what gets people out in our community. So it's very important, and to mention, when I talk about the direct impact spend, when I pull those reports, I do have a longer report that shows taxes projected that were collected, jobs that were impacted by this, and I can share those, some of those reports, if any of you are interested in seeing them. They're interesting. And thank you very much. I know not all communities do this for arts and events, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Council President Sandy, just for the record, February 7th would be the, we have five Mondays this month, just for the record.
Very good. Any, any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Cavami?
So regarding the robotics event, that would be something that we would be referring them then back to the CVB, to Visit Grand Forks?
Yeah, I believe so, yes. We certainly will take up that discussion when we get to that item tonight, but I would, I would assume so, but maybe not. We will, we'll have that discussion on two items.
Perfect. Thanks.
Great. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 2.2, Arts Re-Grant Program Annual Report. Ms. Richards?
Very similar process for review and request for reauthorization from the Community Foundation. Becca Bomback is here to do that. I'm sure she would support your recommendation for additional funding, and I would also encourage Ms. Bomback to talk a little bit about the National Endowment for the Arts funding that the Community Foundation was able to receive. That's separate from this funding, but they were able to apply based on their administrative partnership with the city that has brought a nice chunk of funding for the arts into the community in addition to this. So with that, Ms. Bomback.
Greetings, Ms. Bomback.
Thank you all. Thanks for having me this evening. As mentioned, my name is Becca Bomback. Many of you know me. I'm the Executive Director of the Community Foundation of Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, and Region. So we do serve Polk County, as well as Grand Forks County, and during COVID, we went north as well with our COVID relief dollars. Since 2018, we've had the honor and privilege to administer, on behalf of the city, the Arts Re-Grant Program. The program provides much-needed funding for nonprofits in our community that provide services directly related to artistic and creative support for families, children, and audiences in the city of Grand Forks. In 2021, our program opened in early February and closed our online portal on March 5th. We received 14 applications from eligible organizations with over 227,000 in requests for operational support. I will note, because of the previous discussion, that we do cap the requests at $22,500. We started that, I believe, last year or in 2019, as the requests prior were, it was just not, we were just not able to fund anywhere near what we were receiving in terms of requests. So capping at $22,500 for the organizations made it a more manageable number and more manageable request with what we are dealing with. Our committee of five reviewers score applications based on three criteria on a rubric: artistic quality, impact, and organizational capabilities. All applications had merit, and the committee recommended full distribution of the amount, $123,037.90, in grant awards spread across those 14 applications. You'll find the specifics in my report on what each organization received. Grantees are required to submit an evaluation by the end of March 2022. Once we've received all those, we'll gather the highlights and some photos, some quotes, and distribute those to us, as we did last year. For the 2022 cycle, applications will be accepted in a similar fashion to 2021, and the program will be administered according to the timeline in that report as well. As Meredith mentioned, we were able to successfully, through a variety of steps, apply to the National Endowment on the Arts with the city's support and receive $150,000 that will go towards this year's program. As she did mention, these are separate funds, so there will be two pools of funding, two separate awards for applicants, and then two separate agreements, as there are certain federal restrictions on the use of those funds and whatnot. But certainly is going to help our organizations. As I note, you know, our requests are always exceed what we're able to provide through this program, but it certainly does help to, to bolster that for this year. So, again, we've loved administering this program. It's one of five or six programs that we do annually at the Community Foundation. We had a very strong 2021. We distributed 1.2 million in total grants throughout the region, so that's one of our bigger years that we've ever done. And we took in 4.8 million in contributions to the foundation. So, very excited about a great year. A lot of people in the community thinking about charitable giving and giving back, and our three grand is, is just one of the many good things that we're doing.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Ms. Bomback? Mr. Weber? Yes, sir?
I'll make a similar motion from our last agenda item, move to accept the, the current report, reauthorize the administration of the 2022 funds, and direct staff to consider a similar increase in funding.
Great. Here's the motion, second by Docler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 2.3, First Robotics Great Northern Regional Funding Request. Mr. Phelan?
Hey, Council President Sandy, members of the city council. Thank you for the previous two motions. I, as I think about this particular sponsorship, I think this one might, we may want to do the exception, the rule. This is a, have you ever been to this event? It's an incredible event. As you can see, the economic spin on this is quite significant, at over 700,000. You know, lots of people staying in our community, eating, dining, all those sorts of things. And so this really has a great spin. I think the other tie to the Grand Forks is, it is at the Alara Center. And again, if you've ever been there, it encompasses the entire arena floor, along with several meeting areas. So it's really a partnership. I think on this particular one, is it's a, really a huge asset on STEM. It really showcases the Grand Forks community. It showcases the Alara Center, and has a tremendous return on investment. And as I recall, speaking with Ms. Riggs, is this is probably one of the most impactful multi-day events that we, we hold in our community. And so I think with this one, I would ask that we make a commitment to this one, just because it's unique. I think it's a unique onto itself for $25,000 this year, and then look at in succeeding two years. The other reason why I'm saying that is time is short. This event kicks off in March, and so I think it would be good to let the program sponsors know sooner rather than later that there's a commitment from the city. Additionally, this is a competitive. A lot of our events are homegrown, so they're not going to go anywhere, but this one really isn't a competitive event. There's a lot of other communities in our northern regions that would love to host this particular event. So I think this community should really want to make our community and Alara Center as competitive as possible. So with that, I know there's representatives also from First Robotics. I'd let them speak on their own behalf, too, but on this one, I, if you could move this forward as the exception to the rule.
So, Mr. Phelan, in, in lieu of, in lieu of an additional $25,000 that may go to Visit Greater Grand Forks, that as part of your recommendation for next week or whenever we come back, you're suggesting that we take $25,000 of what would go to them and dedicate it today ourselves, because time is of the essence?
Exactly. So when we bring back that proposal, Mr. Weber, you've asked for, we'll, we'll take this request separated, but take it into account as part of the greater whole. Yeah, thank you, Council President Sandy.
Very good. So any other comments or, yes, Mr. Weigel?
Move approval.
Moved by Weigel. Is there a second?
Second.
I think Cavami seconded. Mr. Cavami, you seconded. Great. Mr. Vean, you can second next to him. Any other comments? Yes, Ms. Mock?
Have we, Mr. Phelan, have we ever supported a convention before? I know we support them through the convention, or Greater Grand Forks, and I guess my concern with this is that we start supporting certain conventions and not others. I'm, I certainly look to some of those expertise from some of our partners that do this daily.
Yeah. Council President Sandy and Council Vice President Mock, we have supported conventions, multi-day conventions. For example, the North Dakota League of Cities comes through Grand Forks every few years. We have supported that on behalf of the city of Grand Forks. We're going to support, Julie, I'm trying to think of your organization.
Oh, the North Dakota Travel Conference.
The North Dakota Travel Conference comes through. We do support those. Those are generally $5,000 to $10,000 that we do administratively as part of a line item in 2163. So we do this. Again, this is within our spending authority of about $25,000, but we're making a multi-year commitment, so we want to make sure our governing board, you as the city council, are aware of that, and are on board with what we're doing.
Would we consider doing this for this year, and then bringing it back as a more comprehensive look when we're looking to increase funds for some of these other special events?
Council Vice President Mock, I think we would. So when we put together, obviously we make commitments, but we got to fund them year to year. And so while they determine in the mayor's, I guess, 23 budget, whether we're going to specifically line item this on top, or this robotics group out, or are we going to just incorporate it into the greater events funding. But we have some time to work on, on those particulars.
Well, yes, but the motion as is, is for three years.
I'm sorry, but we'll have to go back. Mr. Weigel, were you moving for the three years, or moving for one year?
I was moving for three years.
Understood. I did not, I didn't understand that myself.
That's what the staff report says.
That is, that is what the staff reports, that is a fact, that is a fact. I guess my personally, my thought process was, we're going to make an exception for this year, and for next year, the additional money would be in Visit Greater Grand Forks pool, and so that they would then need to go and apply with Greater Grand Forks. But, but we don't have to do that. That's just what I was thinking based upon the conversation.
I don't have an issue with that. My only thing that I would say then is, I think we look at the Third Street events as well tonight for funding. I, I just feel that if we take one right now, and then we don't take the next one, then I feel like we're throwing a little bit of a curveball. So I'm fine if we look at one for a one-year commitment for the next two items, and then we wrap it into Ms. Riggs' budget for next year into that committee, if that would work.
Council President Sandy, what I hear is that we're going to fund it this year. There is a general commitment to fund it in the next two years, and again, that's part of the annual budget process. So I think that's part of the motion. We can't fund things that aren't in a budget in the future.
Right, right. Mr. Vean, comment?
Well, we can't delegate future councils on this one here, so we can only approve with legislative intent for the next two. So that's what I, what if we're going to do it. It doesn't commit us next year, but we approve the amount requested for this year with the intent to do that in future years.
Thank you.
That makes sense, yeah. Very good.
So just as a point of clarification, we're talking about intending to do this for three years? Because I guess I could, I could see potentially making an exemption for this year to get this event back and going, considering the tight timeline. If it's for three years, I mean, I know it's a wonderful event. I'm very nervous about opening the door to conventions being brought. We've already seen that with concerts, and, you know, I think we opened that door, and we've seen that happen a lot more, and I would like to see some of these funds go through the correct channels. And in my mind, I see Greater Grand Forks and some of these who give out these funds on a regular basis. They understand these events. They compare it across all of these events. I'd like to see them handling that. That was the intent of moving some of these funds towards those different programs. So I just want to make sure I know what we're being asked and what the implications are with the motion.
Council President Sandy, I think to Mr. Vean's words, these are legislative intent, so what we're asking for is the $25,000 to fund this year's, with the intent that, with additional funding to the Greater Grand Forks visit, Visit Greater Grand Forks, that they would know that this is a priority of city council, and will look for ways to fill that, that void in their funding. But I think to your point, Vice President Mock, it would get you out of the day-to-day picking, and you would let the professionals do that delegating, but they would have a general sense that you're supportive of robotics into the future. There's an intent to really seriously look at funding into the out years, but allow, delegate the authority to them as part of our city funding every year.
And so if we, if we do that, and we find the funds, and if we are going to truly delegate it, then I also want to trust those partners who are doing that work, and we're not dictating, because then we are picking winners and losers. Right? So we would look at that being a line item increase, and then we would then trust that their vetting process will take care of it going forward?
Yep. And I think that's why Ms. Riggs and Ms. Bomback come here every year, just to verify what they've done year to year, and then you can kind of review their performance, and if you have any questions. So I think, I think it works well, which is give them more money to do greater and better things.
Mr. Mayor, something to add?
Yeah, I think Junie makes a good point, or, sorry, Vice President Mock makes a good point. Let's get through this year, and I think as the 2023 budget process gets underway, let's not make any commitments beyond that. Let's just get there, and then as we get to that budget, we need to longer talk about this and how we want this to go. But I think there's, it is getting difficult to try to pick and choose which ones we want to fund or not fund. And if we do set this in the CVB's hand and give them a bigger bucket, it's not to say that's not going to get filled up in a hurry, and we'll be back asking for more money in a couple of years anyways, but at least it'll buy us some time, I guess. So I guess that'd be my thoughts.
Great. Any other, any other comments? Any other, any other comments?
Well, Mr. Weigle was supportive of the staff report. I think ultimately we can only, we can only bind this council. So do you want to make an amendment to your motion, Mr. Weigle?
Sure.
To fund for 2022?
Sure.
25,000. Great. And Mr. Kavami, are you okay with that amendment?
Oh, yeah. Just for the record, one comment. If you think about youth-focused, competitive STEM activities that bring hundreds of people to Grand Forks, I know this is an exception, but this is exactly what I would, I would appreciate being brought to us to make sure that these activities happen. So while it is amended, I do support it and will continue to support it for the next two years, assuming I'm in my position.
Great. Duly noted. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Item 2.4, Third Street Events, Hugo's Concert Series Funding Request.
Hey, thank you, City Council President. We have Ms. Horak here with the, the event organizer, also representatives of the Downtown Development Association are here too. Another great request, trying to do a multi, multi-month during the summer concert series, primarily sponsored by Hugo's, and so providing great entertainment. As you recall, last year, we were trying to get events back up and going after the COVID pandemic and we thought we'd be passive, but we're still in it. But you approved, as you recall, the Greenway Takeover for some funding and also there was an obelisk series that was hosted by the Downtown Development Association. Again, this is another additional request. It'll, I suspect will be at Visit Greater Grand Forks too. And so I thought Ms. Horak could come up and kind of explain what she's trying to do and have a further conversation regarding her event that she's moving forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan, Ms. Horak. Good evening.
Hello. Thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Horak. My husband Nick and I operate a couple of businesses in Grand Forks and we also have an event management company called Third Street Events. And one of the bigger events that we put on is this event, which is known as Hugo's Concert Series. Hugo's is our title sponsor. This year, we have a pretty big lineup. We're doing four shows, one in May, two in July, and one in August. Two of those are national headlining acts and the other two are regional. So it's a, a pretty big budget for this year. We're looking at about a $300,000 operating budget. So we're coming to the city with this sponsorship request to go directly towards assisting with those operating costs so that we can keep our ticket prices for our shows either free, which is our May show will be a free show. And then our other shows would be a lower than average. So our two national acts that we're having are usually anywhere in the range from a 50 to 60, 100-plus dollar ticket. And we're hoping to be able to do those for 20 to 30 dollars. So we're hoping to keep our ticket prices low by bringing in multiple sponsors. We've hit a little bit of a snag in the road with sponsorships the last year, being able to plan for this. So that's why we're coming to the city today for that. But I'm here for any specific questions that you might have as well.
Any comments or questions? A move approval?
Moved by Weber.
Second.
There's a second by Weigle. Ms. Horak, are you, are, these are outdoor events, right?
They are.
How, how do you segregate people?
Well.
Fencing?
Fencing.
Fencing.
Yep. So our May event is actually going to be held on Third Street. And so we fence in the event area. One of our concerts will be in Town Square. And then two of our concerts are two larger shows, we're actually going to use the River Boat Road parking lot. And so we'll fence in that area to sec, you know, to have a, a secure event space.
Got it. And you have food vendors?
Yep. We do food vendors and then beverage vendors.
Who's, who's selling the alcohol?
So we'll be doing that through one of our other companies.
Got it. Okay. Sounds good. Any other, Mr. Vean? Yes, sir?
Well, this from Mr. Phelan. Do you see Greenway Takeover coming in and asking, having a request coming forward to?
Council, Council President Sandy and Council Member Vean, they have not contacted me. I know we kind of said it as a, trying to get them up and going with Greenway Takeover. They had lost some sponsorships too, similar to what Ms. Horak had said. I don't know that answer, but I wouldn't be surprised.
I mean, I just say that because they're all great events and I think we get a return on that investment. But I just, I'm just anticipating that that will come at some point in time and, you know, typically have been supportive of that.
And Council President, you know, it is quite incredible what people do to put all these events on, whether it's Greenway Takeover or this Hugo's Concert Series. It is, I'm sure they're not huge moneymakers, but it does bring people downtown, brings people into our communities and really showcases our community as a, a place for live music and a place for entertainment in our community, which I think is really important with competing benchmark communities that we have in our region.
Ms. Mock, yes?
So I don't want to say anything negative. I think this sounds like a great series of concerts and great event. I personally have had a little bit of a hard time with having concerts come piecemeal and funding them. I would much rather see us have an organized fashion similar to special events or maybe through special events where we allocate how much we're comfortable with on an annual basis and then have it be a competitive process. Otherwise, I, I get a little uncomfortable because this one comes forward and that sounds great, but then I'm not exactly sure if we'll be getting other ones or where all the funds will come. And meanwhile, we've got other events competing for each other, you know, for funding through special events or different things like that. So I guess I'd much rather see more of an organized process and have it brought through that. Not to say anything negative about specific events, that's just, I'm getting uncomfortable with that type of funding request. So I just, need that said, and I don't want to say anything negative about any events coming forward, I just would far prefer that. I don't know if that's a possibility to either do that through special events funding or a separate pool or program that could be managed in a similar way so that we're not doing that going forward.
Council Vice President Mock, I think this would be the one year and, and then we would add additional funding that, you know, you'd be part of the budget review process in '23. And so we would put additional funding, maybe work with Julie Rig, in this case, in her organization about what that right number is, how they would do it. And then it would get you out of it. So this is, I think, a stopgap measure of what we're doing now. And thankfully, it's, it's positive things that we're trying to do, trying to stop gaps. And this is only going to enlarge and it kind of shows of the success we've had as a community that people want to host events like this. So I do see it as a one-time. We will work through the mayor's budget and then you'll review that, you know, starting in June, July about what '23 looks like and beyond. And we'll have plenty of discussion. So this would be, I agree, a one-year stopgap measure.
Ms. Mock, yes?
Um, I think that's a great thing to do. I guess, I mean, whatever the council decides to do going forward, I guess it's January, so I don't see why we couldn't have some sort of pool and then have a competitive process before we're hitting the months where that would happen. I know that's not as immediate as the request is. And certainly if the rest of the council has a different will, that's the way it'll go. I just, I'm not comfortable continuing to fund in this manner. So I'd be happy to help try to get something together so that we're voting on it by February so that we can be as accommodating as we can be. But that's just where I am with these funding requests.
From, from which fund were we planning on taking the money anyway?
Again, Council President Sandy, it would be from Fund 2163, which is your city economic development fund. So we would take the funds from that particular fund.
Ms. Dockler, comments?
I would just like to say that I agree with Vice President Mock. I do think that we've had this conversation up here before about an RFP process for dollars. Even most recently, it was about how we spend our COVID dollars and I don't, I don't think we, that ever really happened. So it has been a continual conversation from sitting council members up here that we would like to see more of a process so that there's a fairness to how these are coming forward and how we're spending the dollars because there's a lot of great ideas in this community. It'd be great if we were making sure people knew about the money that we have to support these kinds of events. It's nothing against this current event or the ones that we talked about earlier tonight. It's just about fairness because we're talking about taxpayer dollars. And there's a lot of good ideas that could really add to the vibrancy of our community in ways that maybe we haven't seen brought forward before. And so it would be nice to have a process for those dollars. So it is great that we're gonna, we're talking about increasing that budget for the CVB. They do fantastic work and they've got decades to show that they've done this well. I think we need to lean into those strengths for this kind of work. I don't think that we don't hear about them. We want to hear about what's going on in this city and if there's ways that we can support. But I do think that a process serves all people as opposed to, to a few folks who are just lucky to already be, you know, in this kind of a world or know about certain pots of money and are able to, to make the right asks. It's nothing against them that they're doing their job well. But I think that we can open it up so that there's more people that are involved in this and more people have the opportunity to kind of put their mark on our city.
Yeah, Mr. Weigle?
Mr. Phelan, how many external organizations redistribute funds for us? We've heard of two tonight. Is there any more that you can think of?
Council President Sandy and Council Member Weigle, the only other group I can think of off the top of my head is when we do the CDPG funds, there is a community that Meredith Richards works with that distributes our CDPG funds. So I think that's probably the third one, but other than that, I, I can't think of any off the top of my head other than those three.
But we have to approve the CDPG funding.
Yeah. And I would say that's different than these two funds that we've talked about before. Why don't we combine the two? Yeah. It's arts and events, right? Why not combine the two organizations? We're going to save 6% on the money that we're paying for the administration through one organization. There'd be more money available. And what we could do is we could put a couple of people from that committee onto the other committee and, and have one big committee. I mean, that, that's what we've talked about tonight is we don't like the process, then let's figure out a process. We've been saying we don't like the process for months now. Let's just come up with a plan and, and get it, get it done with. And so that, that'd be my plan. Combine them all, arts and events, increase the budget for both and then put a committee together and say they're the ones deciding. And it's probably an unpopular opinion, but that's okay.
Council President Sandy, I think we, I can work with Ms. Bombak and Ms. Rig and then we can kind of come back with a strategy. As we said before the February 7th meeting, when you do a final approval, we'll strategize and come back with a new process this year and then thereafter. So you feel like there's a, the process and RFP and get the people that are doing this day-to-day and no more, get them to engage and come up with some of the solutions that I think you're looking for.
Mr. Phelan, how much, how much money did we put? I know the last couple of years have been odd. On a, on a typical year, how much are we being asked for on out-of-the-ordinary things like this? Not a lot? Couple hundred thousand?
I think it's 200,000 or less.
Sure. So, so to Ms. Dockler's point, some years we get asked for none. Other years, we get asked for a couple hundred thousand. The minute we say we're willing to dedicate 200,000, every single year, we're in for 200 grand because that's the way it's going to be. And so I don't know if I'm in for 200,000 every year. Yes, Ms. Dockler?
Isn't it the same idea that we look at our economic development, build it, and it will encourage growth? If the money is there and we make a fair process for people to access it for special events, we'll see more events and more vibrancy in town, which could possibly very much impact our economic bottom line by people coming into town, seeing events that possibly are more consistent in nature so people can build on them and look forward to coming to them. I see it as a growth point for vibrancy in the community.
So right now, we're doing special events and we're doing arts. Are you thinking we should have a pot of money for concerts? I mean, because I'm just trying to understand, right? We've got processes for a couple of things already. And if we just throw more money into special events, we're not necessarily going to get concerts. We might get more youth hockey tournaments.
I think it's still our money that we're putting forward. So we could have that conversation about how it's going to be shaped and spent. That's, I don't think we're just taking and giving money and saying, do what you will with it. We can talk about that and how it will be spent. If we say X amount of dollars or percentage, we want going to concerts or to events that are cultural in nature or events of, that are robotics and STEM focused or whatever it may be, we can have that conversation if we're looking at putting that much more money into a program that already exists and then looking to move it forward and reshape it. I don't think that an agency or an entity or program has to be stagnant all the time. It can change. It can develop along with the money that you're putting into it. I don't think that we should combine the two because I think that they have different purposes. The Arts Regrant focuses on things that aren't necessarily a special event and then also not necessarily an event itself or art programs. So I think that they have different wheelhouses that they operate in and that's why they've traditionally been separated.
Just again, to, to your point, we have never dictated what the money should go for in the past. We have, for example, when we've looked at CDPG, we've provided some direction over time to Ms. Richards and that group. We're interested in bricks and mortar or we're interested in figuring out how to help the mission or we're interested in dealing with homeless, right? And we've done that in the past. And I don't, I think to, to what you're getting at, I, I don't think there's any problem with us providing direction if, if that's what we want to. We just have never done it in the past, either in the arts or the special events.
I don't think we have to, but you were asking about it, so I suggested something. But I don't think that that's necessary. I think that the people we have in charge of these programs doing this work, they have a vetted process. They always come back to report to us. They're always open to feedback from us. They haven't shown that they are going to push one sector over another when it comes to those special events. I think that they're, they're good at their jobs and they're professionals. And so we could continue on the way that we are. But if you would like to have more control, certainly that's always a conversation we can have since it is taxpayer dollars.
I just, I know that, yes, Ms. Rig, something to add? I, I believe she gets three or four times as many asks, right? And so if we throw a few hundred thousand more, are, are you just going to, instead of funding 60% or 25%, are you just going to fund 100% of all the requests? How are you going to deal with it?
Well, I could, I could clarify a few things, President Sandy, members of council. So we do fund concerts such as the Hugo's Concert Series, the Greenway Takeover Festival. We don't fund concerts, say that the Alara Center or the Ralph Engelsstedt Arena are bringing in. We do fund events that they bring in, but we have not funded concerts on that level. So just as much as all the Grand Forks youth hockey tournaments get funding from us, these events do as well. The problem is there's just not enough money. And like I said, we try to contribute to this fund every year as well and we haven't been able to in the last, in the last year because of our funding situation. So we do fund them, but like I said, we're not able to fund what they need.
Good stuff. There is a motion and a second on the floor. I, I personally think that we should wait and wait for the mayor's recommendation and perhaps even have this go to special events for funding. But that's just my opinion. Like Ms. Mock, I don't like picking winners and losers, just like how the school district tonight, Katie, is going to be picking winners and losers, right? I don't, I don't like, I don't like doing that. I think we should rely on people that are independent of us to make those decisions for us. So if people want to vote and approve it, I'm okay with that. I'm going to have no hard feelings, but I just, for me, think we should wait. Ms. Mock, yep?
Yeah. I'm fine with if we want to make, you know, if we want to take a vote, that's completely that's completely fine. I just previously did serve with Julie on a separate special events committee that reviewed requests as they came in. They also separately would go to the CBB at that time. You know, certainly through a city-appointed committee, you got various expertise. And, you know, we would go through those applications and make a recommendation, it would come to council. Then in years following that, we switched it so that it was out of our hands and we received an annual report. And I see that as doing a couple of things. First of all, we're not looking at those events and making a decision, we're not picking those winners and losers, we're trusting the people that kind of do that professionally and see those events professionally, can weigh them all against each other and make the best decisions they can. They also are able to respond on more of a quarterly basis. When we did it through a city special events committee, we could only review it annually, which really limited people's ability to event plan. So I see some benefits to having these partners allocate these funds. You know, certainly in the last few years, Community Foundation has done the Arts Reg Grant. It's kind of a totally different program, it's focused on some totally different elements of the community. So I guess I personally would like to see them remain separate. Obviously, we can have those discussions going forward and, you know, I need to be as open-minded as anybody else and explore whatever we would bring forward. I just see them serving some very different needs. So no ill will either way, I just.
Yeah, and, and if, for example, I vote no, it's not indicative of my opinion of whether they should get funding or not. It's, it's purely on, on principle. Yes, Mr. Weber.
A wise city administrator once said to me that we have the, the pleasure of getting to pick winners and winners, actually, is what we do here. It's fantastic that we have these kinds of opportunities. Also, anytime that, that myself and Mr. Weigle make a motion and, and second it, suggests some, some broad-based wisdom there. Beyond that, I, I think that we, we often see the situation where we will rubber stamp very expensive infrastructure projects, which are terribly important and we need to support them. But then we, we have long discussions about what turn out to be relatively small amounts of money. So I think that, in comparison. So I, I really appreciate Ms. Horak taking on this work and, and coming to council. I'd like to see us move forward with the vote tonight and then continue this important discussion about process, especially as we move towards the 2023 budget and think about how we need to restructure things at that time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank you. I, I will note that alcohol sales are probably the biggest moneymaker on these projects, right? And so I, I do struggle a little bit knowing that we're making the donation to, to get them to profitability or whatever, and then, you know, the pro forma has no, has no indication of revenue from, from the alcohol sales, so.
We, we all are multifaceted in the small community where we wear many hats, so we wouldn't want to begrudge someone.
I, I'm not begrudging anyone from trying to make money. I, I'm a big fan of it myself, so. All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, why don't we take a roll call vote? The motion is to approve as is. Yep.
All right, roll call vote. Weigle?
Yes.
Dockler?
No.
Weber?
Yes.
Mock? Kavami?
Yes.
Veen?
Yes.
And President Sandy. Motion passes.
Thank you very much, everyone. Moving right along. Item 2.5 has been pulled from the agenda. Item 2.6, donation of GFPD squad car to law enforcement museum at Bonansville. Chief, good evening.
President Sandy, members of the committee, if you could allow me, let me give you just a quick history of how we got here tonight that gives you a little more than what's in the background on your staff report. May 27th, 2020, bad day for Grand Forks, bad day for my department. Officer Cody Holtie was killed in the line of duty. Fast forward to a next significant date of August of 2021, if you recall the end of Watch Ride, which was put together all the group of motorcyclists that ended up with the display at the Ralph Englested Arena. As part of that tour where they visit communities where everybody lost an officer, there was a, for lack of a better term, would be almost an adult essay contest where you, you could write an essay as to what the loss of your officer meant to your community, and what they were raffling off was actually one of their motorcycles that they rode in. As they went through the vetting process, another agency won that motorcycle, but they contacted us and stated it was so close that in lieu of the motorcycle, we'd like to send you $15,000. That $15,000 stipulation would be that we would like it used in some way to honor your fallen officer. So fast forward to November of last year, at a North Dakota Chiefs Association meeting, we met the curators of the Law Enforcement Museum, which is located on the grounds of Bonansville in West Fargo, who stated that they were always looking for more things to add to their collection to honor the profession and honor officers statewide, not a, not a Fargo initiative. So we kind of put our collective heads together and came up with the idea of why not donate Cody's car? As you will see in your staff report, Officer Holtie's vehicle would have been up for trade-in this year. Trade-in value on that would have been $10,800. The equipment, like the cage, the, everything else that's inside the vehicle does not fit in our new hybrid vehicles anyway, so we'd be able to leave that all intact. We would have had to get new equipment anyway. So basically, next step how we got here this evening was to contact Mr. Gostad's office, who said, what's the proper channels for working forward? Sent some of the paperwork there for Mr. Gostad's review, and obviously before anything was finalized, it would definitely be in, in concert with the city attorney. His advisement was that it would take city council action to okay this. So I guess what we're asking is that we be allowed to donate that vehicle, the $10,800 that we would have had for trade-in, we will pull out of that $15,000 from the end of Watch Ride, we will apply that, and any other associated costs from that vehicle so that it's a zero impact on the city budget relevant to our, our vehicle changeover, and it gives us the opportunity to honor Cody in perpetuity at the law enforcement museum. I can speak, you know, as a father that's raised four children here, all of my kids still remember their school field trips down to Bonansville. So what better way to honor the legacy of a true hero than to have something from Grand Forks on display there?
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or, Mr. Weigle?
Move approval.
Weigle moves approval. Is there a second by Dockler? Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Chief. Item 2.7, city hall renovation, phase two, second floor. Mr. Boeslue?
Council President Sandy, members of the city council, what you have in front of you in the staff report is basically an extension, extenuation of a project that started in 2019. It, I put in the staff report, it came to fruition in 2019, was finished in 2021, but in doing some research, it was actually prior to that, 2018, there was a group with members from, from your body that actually sat on a group to, to choose a C Mar and moving forward, looked at the different ways of, of doing business or utilizing a contract within the city of Grand Forks. C Mar was picked, which was PCL, and this is, this is phase two of that project. We've been working on it for, looking at monetary numbers designed for probably the last six, seven months. We were quite high. We came to in October for a budget amendment to, for a total of 400, or excuse me, $545,000. They came back, opened bids, and we're at 541 and some change. So what I'm asking tonight is to approve that 541 and some change, as well as alternate three. You'll see on there, there's an alternate for 2200, I think it was. Yeah, 2202 for painting of just the common areas. And the reason I put that alternate on there is they did paint after the first floor was done, threw that out for bids, and the little bidder there was $4,000. So this is the best bang for our buck when it comes to painting. The other two alternates on there, we may do, but that, that'll, that'll see how the project goes and if any contingency funds are spent throughout the project. But as of right now, we don't need carpet, we don't need, need ceiling tile.
You don't think we need carpet down there?
Well, there's some, the carpets, the carpet's 10 years, 10 years old, and that's up for discussion. So if this body tells me we want carpet, PCL's here right behind me and we'll, we'll add it.
In, in my opinion, if we're going to be doing that work anyway for the extra $10,700 and change, we should add the carpet. But that's just my opinion. I think we're gonna already be disrupted.
Yeah, we're gonna be tearing all the carpets, gonna, that's the only carpet that will not come out of second floor in this project as, as of now and in the common areas. So I'm happy if that's a motion.
Well, I'm not making that motion, I'm making that suggestion. Any, any thoughts? Mr. Veen, do you have any thoughts about the second floor renovation?
I think I agree with what you just stated, that we should do the carpet.
And all?
Any ceiling tiles?
Do they need to be done? I can't remember how much ceiling tiles were, like 6,000, something like that?
Oh, let's see, I got them in here. Actually, ceiling tiles are, Jonathan's right behind me, but I think they were, they were below 3,000, so.
So for an extra $14,000, we could do all three alternatives, or 15,000, we could do the three alternatives on a half a million dollar project? It seems like a good use of time and energy to me. Again, so do you, do you agree, Mr. Veen?
Aye.
Are you making that motion? Great. Moved by Veen, second by Weber. Any other comments?
Questions for PCL or JLG behind us? Good enough, then I think they, they heard and we'll wait till you vote, but.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 2.8, award bids for project 8058, city facilities fiber interconnect.
Good evening, Council President Sandy.
Good evening, Ms. Parvy.
So this project was brought to you just a couple of weeks ago when we talked about amending a engineering services agreement. This is actually awarding the bid of the project. So the fiber will provide connection to 23 facilities throughout the city. It improves security, it improves the network connectivity, and then it also decreases our service interruptions. It really is gonna benefit a number of areas. Water is actually going to be able to tie in all of our facilities during this project. And then we are funding it along with the ARPA funds that were dedicated to this project this evening. Jason Whitesock is here from AE2S and is able to answer any questions, detailed questions about the project, if you have any. Otherwise, we do have alternates that we wanted to include in that award tonight, as well as an associated budget amendment. We did have funding for this project last year, but since we didn't have it bid out, we weren't able to do the purchase order. So we do that budget amendment just to be able to carry those funds over from cash reserve.
Any questions for Ms. Parvy? I know Mr. Jonison emailed me and said that he believes that for the interconnectivity of our government, this is a really good use, use of funds. So, yes, Mr. Veen? What, what is the budget amendment amount?
It isn't a set amount yet. It would be about 270,000.
Okay.
We can definitely add that to the staff report if you'd like us to for next, for the council meeting.
Move approval. Okay, moved by Veen, is there a second? Second by Kavami. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Parvy. Item 2.9, create district, project 8411, District 762, Belmont Road reconstruction from 47th Avenue South to Rivers Edge Drive. Mr. Lieberman, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and council members. This project before you is the third phase of a three-year effort to convert South Belmont Road from a two-lane asphalt rural section with ditches to a three-lane concrete section with storm sewers, sidewalks, and concrete bike path. This, this section in particular addresses the section from, of Belmont Road from 47th Avenue South down to Rivers Edge Drive where we completed this summer, the summer's construction work. The special assessment allocation for this is 8020 for reconstruction of the pavement portion. The sidewalks portion is typically assessed to the residents that front the sidewalk. Storm sewer is, is 100% special assessed to benefiting properties. And the bike path is a cost share where the benefiting properties pay for the first five feet of the bike path or the equivalent of a sidewalk, and the city pays for the rest of that. So it's a little more complicated cost share policy, but that's, that's what was approved by the commission for the last section of Belmont, and we anticipate they'll recommend this as well. The construction cost of this is 1.9 million dollars. If you look in the staff report, there's a recommended district map with the district boundaries. You'll notice that this is a classified street, so a little larger boundaries, a little larger district than typical for a normal street, but it's, it's bound on the east by the Red River, on the west by the district boundary when we reconstructed Cherry Street, and on the north by 47th Avenue South, and on the south by the northernmost boundary from phase two of Belmont Reconstruct. We do have a public input meeting scheduled for February 22nd, tentatively, and we are sending out mailers to the properties that front Belmont. We often need like construction easements from them and a little bit of discussion on how we transition their front yard to, to make it acceptable to them. So we'll have that public input as well. With that, we are requesting approval of the engineers report and creating the special assessment district and directing engineering to prepare plans and specifications and advertise for construction bids for this project.
Move approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Moved by Kavami, is there a second?
Second.
By everyone, Ms. Mock was first, though. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item 210, plans and specs for project 8420, 2022 water main replacement. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This, this project is an annual effort to replace some of the worst water mains in Grand Forks. We identify a real bad section this year along South Ninth Street. On the north, it's bound by Seventh Avenue South, goes south about six blocks and then catches a block of 13th Avenue South from Ninth Street to 10th Street. So about seven blocks total. It's, it is a larger project than we typically aim for. We typically aim for about a half million dollars. This is approaching 1.2 million dollars. So it's funded entirely by enterprise funds from the, the water fund. Yeah, that's about all the details I have unless you have any questions, requesting approval of plans and specifications.
Mr. Veen? Comment, question? I'm just gonna make the comment, it seems like we are gonna probably continue to do water main replacement projects every year for, for the foreseeable future, so, and this is covered through the utility, so I'd make a motion to approve. Moved by Veen, second by Weber.
Yes.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 211, plans and specs for project 8473, 2022 inlet bag contract. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you. This, this is a unique requirement, it's really a test project this year to, in It's really a test project this year to install inlet protection bags in catch basins in areas where we're constructing residential homes. The City of Grand Forks is responsible for compliance with its MS four stormwater permit, which entails that we have to ensure that sediment doesn't enter the stormwater system like the English Cooley or the Red River, et cetera. These neighborhoods are often difficult to enforce or ensure compliance because there are multiple builders in a common development, and they're often building side by side, and it's very difficult to determine who is that one owner we could hold accountable. So this is an effort to ensure compliance because the city is, is ultimately responsible to ensure compliance with that permit. The, the cost of this first-year contract for the twenty-twenty-two construction season is a little over seventy-two thousand dollars. We did implement a fifty-dollar permit fee. This is not meant to cover the cost of the inlet bags, et cetera. It's more of an administrative fee for processing the permit. The, the contract is intended to come out of Fund fifty-four, fifty-four-hundred stormwater, and what you can expect to see is inlet bags will be installed in April, and they'll be maintained on a biweekly basis, or every two weeks, by a contractor, and then they'll be removed at the end of the contract or when winter comes. So it's kind of a annual service contract. So with that, we are recommending and requesting approval of plans and specifications and authorization to go for bid for this requirement.
Interesting. Yes, Ms. Mock?
I guess, I found it an interesting item. I, certainly, we have responsibilities for our MS four permit. I was a little, I guess, I was a little surprised that we would charge a fee that wouldn't fully cover the cost, particularly because anyone who would be doing construction in these areas are responsible for not only their own city stormwater permit, but also their state's stormwater permit. So would we, we would install these and then do the inspections on them as well?
We, we would provide quality assurance over the contractor that we have hired. The contractor will install them, they will inspect them every two weeks.
So that's where the seventy-three thousand, or?
Yes.
Goes to?
A large portion of that is just purchasing the bags themselves, the inlet bags, they're three hundred dollars each. We're anticipating a hundred, a hundred-plus each construction season.
But that's, that's the responsibility of a developer who's in that. So I understand the problem that we're trying to solve. I just don't understand not collecting a fee that would cover the full cost of that because it is their responsibility.
No, I understand. For the MS four permit itself, the, the city ultimately is responsible to ensure compliance with that. And these inlet protection bags are in catch basins in the public right-of-way. The, the builders, you're correct, the builders are tracking dirt out into the roads. It's, it's a busy construction area in these residential developments, and it's probably our most challenging one to hold any one contractor accountable to it. That problem doesn't negate our responsibility to ensure compliance, though, so. You're absolutely correct. We could have charged a permit fee that would probably be five hundred to seven hundred dollars per builder and cover the full cost of the contract, but I think we wanted to see how this test year goes, to see if it accomplishes what we want to, and we could always revisit that next year.
How many inspections and how many violations have we had over the course of the last couple of construction seasons?
I, I don't have an exact number, but I would say it's a continual issue that we are constantly, we have an individual who will drive out, will pretty much constantly find a problem area and be trying to track down who is the, who is the builder or the contractor who may have caused that. Many times, it's, you just can't determine it.
And is there, do we charge a fee if they violate their stormwater permit?
We, we, we do not.
Any, any other comments or questions? Well, Mr. Lieberman, I, it does seem a little bit odd that we aren't charging enough to cover the cost, but I do understand when you say we're, you know, this is a base year, we're looking at it, we can always adjust next year. So I guess, in, in, in light of your, and the engineering department's time that you've invested in this, I'm gonna assume that you've done your due diligence, and so I, I'm okay to go along with your, with your concept, knowing that we'll revisit it next year?
That, that's correct. This is, this is only requesting the first year as a trial basis.
Sure. So I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts? Mr. Veen, yes, sir?
You said it's fifty dollars. What would be if you thought they were gonna cover one hundred percent?
Closer to five hundred to seven hundred dollars per builder, which we would expect they would pass on to the, the buyer of that home.
Because we typically build a hundred and twenty homes in town-ish, hundred and thirty?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Divided by two?
One of our hopes is also that once, once we have a contractor interested in this who's performing well, they've purchased the bags under the first, say, their first bid year. We're hoping that they'll bid for subsequent years and offer a more competitive price because they already own the inlet bags and thus can reduce the cost. We'll have to see if that plays out that way, but we think it's reasonable to assume that they would be more competitive and would bid.
Mr. Veen?
Move approval.
Motion by Veen. Is there a second? Second by Weber. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries. Ms. Mock dissents. Item, thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item two-twelve, plans and specs for project eighty-four-twenty-one, eighty-four-twenty-two, eighty-four-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer repairs. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, President Sandy. This is an annual contract for emergency repairs of water main, sanitary sewer, and stormwater breaks. It also accomplishes some routine projects that pop up throughout the summer as they're identified. We have a three hundred and five thousand dollars estimated for this contract, which is roughly in line with what we spend annually on these requirements. It is one hundred percent city-funded from Funds fifty-two-hundred, fifty-three-hundred, and fifty-four-hundred. With that, we're recommending and requesting approval of plans and specifications and permission to advertise for bids for these, this contract.
Mr. Lieberman, any comments or questions related to item two-twelve? Moved by Cavami. Is there a second? Second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Item two-thirteen, plans and specs for city projects eighty-four-ninety-seven, District two-twenty-three, streetlights for Twenty-Eighth Avenue South from South Twenty-Fifth Street to South Columbia Road. Project eighty-four-ninety-eight, District number two-twenty-four, streetlights for Twenty-Third, South Twenty-Third Street from Thirty-oth Avenue South to Thirty-Second Avenue South and. Project eighty-four-ninety-nine, streetlight LED conversion for BFM addition. Mr. Lieberman?
Thank you, President Sandy. This project, you may recall, met the council last week where the council approved the engineer's report and created the district for the two street lighting projects. In the meantime, we have completed the plans and specifications, and we're about ready to bid pending your, your approval. I would note that we have a public input meeting scheduled for February first for the two street lighting projects, just to, to get any input or concerns the public may have. So with that, request approval of the plans and specifications and direction to proceed to advertise for bids.
Any comments or questions? Moved by Mock, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lieberman, appreciate it. Item two-fourteen, wastewater treatment plant biodredge and biosolids reduction program. Ms. Parvy?
Good evening again, President Council, Councilmember Sandy. Over the last couple of years, we've been working on a number of options for biosolids. We've actually, I shouldn't say the last couple of years, we've been talking about it since two thousand and three and produced a number of studies on what our options would be. Over the last year, when we were working on the wastewater treatment plant facility plan, we talked about the biosolids project and, and really being able to address solids within our lagoons in twenty-twenty-seven, and that was at the cost of twenty-six million. So we, but because of other priorities, we've had to push that on a ways. Recently, we were working with IPS and Steady State Solutions, the Solutions Group, on a couple of other projects in Grand Forks, and we had the conversation of the possibility instead of mechanical dredging solids to move them throughout our main lagoon, the PC-two area, that we would instead work with them on a biodredging project. And that would be basically a, a natural process for us to be able to deal with those solids within that pond. They did put together a proposal for us. We do have Jeremy Tangle and Dan Barker here this evening. They are available to answer any questions that you do have. The project itself is budgeted for two hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We had in our two thousand and twenty-two budget, five hundred and thirty thousand that we would mechanically dredge and address the solids itself. We were planning to do that over a couple of years. Our hopes are that this is effective and cost productive, that we'll continue to be able to address solids in a different manner, more economically for the City of Grand Forks.
Great, thanks. Any comments or questions?
I did, originally, I was questioning that new one, seventy-nine thousand dollars, but I think the way you explained it very well.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Motion by Veen. Is there a second? Second by Mock. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Parvy. Under item three, action items on three point one, discuss and approve the proposed settlement agreement and pending litigation for attorney consultation, advice, and guidance for the case of Rice Lake Contracting Corporation versus Construction Engineers, United States District Court, case number three-twenty CV zero-zero-one-six-four. Mr. Gostad?
Yes, thank you, Council President Sandy. I don't believe we need to go into executive session. You don't have a written agreement yet. We've just finalized the language, I believe, late this afternoon, but in principle, we've reached a settlement amongst all the parties. Just to give you a little background, this is a case that was started by Rice Lake, who did the concrete work at the water treatment plant. They contended that they did extra work and were seeking a little over a million dollars in damages. Their contention is they followed the plan specifications, and so this extra work was something beyond what they were contracted to do. They ended up bringing an action against Construction Engineers U.S., which is a joint venture that consists of Oleman-Shutey and construction engineers, because they were the subcontractor to that joint venture. The joint venture then sued the city, contending that if they get tapped for the Rice Lake damages, they were your plans, city, and therefore you'd be responsible for the additional costs that may be payable. The city then ended up bringing an action against AE2S, who prepared the plan specifications. It is a standard type of claim that you see all the time in these construction contracts. It's the contractor versus the engineer in virtually every case that I've ever seen, or just the owner. We're kind of in the middle of the situation. All the part, well, not all the parties. Rice Lake, Weeded, and AE2S all engaged experts to review the matter preliminarily. They've all, and this deals with seepage in some of the concrete walls that exist. The experts, although came to maybe differing conclusions as to who is at fault, all concluded that this was not a structural problem, it was more cosmetic than anything else. We've reached a settlement in principle, and I just want to go through the terms with you. And would be seeking tonight is approval of the settlement agreement as drafted, subject to my final review and approval of the agreement, which, again, I believe we've gotten to, or it's more legalese in some of the language of the settlement agreement itself, but the basic financial terms have been reached. Right now, the city has nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-five cents of retainage that would otherwise be due and payable to construction engineers, who is our contractor. We are gonna withhold seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars of that amount to be used to repair a problem out there that's unrelated to the concrete, but it's high, high solid pumps is what they are. And we're gonna be using that money to assist in repairing and replacing those pumps that is a problem out there. And so we will be paying honor before July, or January thirty-one of this year, the difference of nine hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents to our contractor. They will in turn, they're holding money in the retainage to Rice Lake, they will in turn pay nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and some odd change to Rice Lake. In addition, Rice Lake will receive an additional amount of compensation in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. That will be funded by Construction Engineers, the joint venture, our contractor. They're contributing just a little over a hundred and seven thousand dollars. The balance will be funded by AE2S of that three forty-five. Also, part of the settlement is that the, these high solid pumps will be repaired and replaced. We have a quote to do so that was obtained, I think, the last part of, fall of twenty-twenty-one. The quote is two hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. Again, seventy-five thousand dollars that's being withheld from Construction Engineers will be used to offset those costs. The balance will, will be paid by AE2S. If, however, the cost would happen to exceed that two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar amount, the city has agreed to pick up the first ten thousand dollars of the debt excess, and then anything over that first ten thousand dollars of excess, AE2S would, would cover that balance. We'll also be hiring AE2S for engineering oversight and construction services for that pump replacement work, and that'll be under a separate agreement with them. We'll be paying them at their two thousand and twenty-one rates. That's also part of the settlement agreement. There are various items of warranty work that are still outstanding. Those are all being preserved. There's, for example, the roof is, is still under warranty and, and it's been accepted by Firestone that has the warranty on that. At the end of the day, it'll be a release of all claims by the parties, and a dismissal of the lawsuit. Those are the primary, basic terms, and again, I don't have the finalized agreement. We're very, very close and got some indication late this afternoon that the terms of the agreement are fine. I'm waiting for a couple of attorneys to get back to me, but if you would approve that, I would, I'm confident we'll have the agreement done within the next day or two, have the mayor sign that agreement, and then start issuing those checks.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad. Mr. Weber, you have a question?
The high solid pumps, how does that connect to the original problem?
It, it wasn't part of the litigation, but it was an outstanding issue that occurred while the litigation was pending and while this matter arose. So it was something that was brought to our attention, and we made it part of the settlement.
We made it part of the settlement.
Yes.
And in the process of doing that, we're hiring AE2S at, at their rates at that time to help us take care of that, and very, very good.
Yeah.
You just, are, do, do we need a motion?
You do, and, and we will not be bringing back the agreement or this back to council again. This will be the final approval.
I'll, I'll move approval.
I think we should, should somebody?
I asked to recuse myself.
Recuse, Ms.? Is there a motion?
I'll move to recuse.
Moved by Weber, second by Dockler. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of recusing Ms. Dockler, say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries.
It would be Ms. Mock.
I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, Ms. Mock. My apologies. I'm sorry, yeah, Ms. Mock, my apologies, yes, I misspoke. So, Mr. Weber, you moved approval, is that true? Yes, is there a second?
Not yet.
Not yet? More additional comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Veen, yes? It may be, Mr. Gossard, you said you had an independent contractor or consultant come in and determine fault?
We hired an expert to assist in evaluating where we thought the, if it was either the plans or Rice Lake's work. And the ultimate conclusion was they were both at fault, equally at fault under his evaluation. Be mindful that it wasn't, it was an evaluation done in anticipation and mediation. Not all of the documents, not all of the review had been performed by this expert. He did the best he could, although he did come up and review the facility. We had also transmitted to him all of the plan specifications for the water treatment plan, and he was, he had those in advance of that report.
So currently, is everybody in agreement? The contractors, Rice Lake, the engineer, and the contractor, Alman Shuti, are they all in agreement with the terms that have been negotiated?
The financial terms are, have been agreed upon, there's just some legalese, that, some language that I wanted inserted that we're still working on, more release language than anything else.
Okay.
Who would also say, Council President Sandy, all the experts on the concrete side determine, one thing we agreed on, other than the settlement, was that it's a qualitative issue, it's not a quantitative issue, and so it's more of an aesthetic issue on the concrete, so that's the good news, because it's hard to redo concrete basins once they're there. So that was, I think it's a unanimous opinion that it's a qualitative issue, it's not a structural or quantitative issue.
One thing I do want to make sure everybody's clear of, everybody denied the allegations asserted against them, and they will continue to deny the allegations, whether it's against the city or any other party. The settlement doesn't change that fact, it's recognition that the cost and expense of this litigation would have been enormous in light of what the remedies might have been.
Right, the remedy is tear it all out, right? I mean, you're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars.
Well, they were looking for a little over $1 million for the additional work. We would have had to gone trying to extrapolate out what our repairs would have been over the next 50 years for these potential cracks that, again, everybody has indicated are not structural in nature.
Get an industrial bucket of Flex Seal and hatch it right up. So there is a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Veen seconds, that's great. Any other comments? Mr. Cavami had his hand up, yes, do you have a comment, sir?
Yeah, what's the total cost to the city, just legal expenses?
Yeah, the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund and the city have agreed to pay half of legal fees and the expert fees, because there was a defense side through the insurance reserve fund, and there was a claim side on behalf of the city, so it was a shared cost. I don't have that number right in front of me, but yes, just the legal fees, and then the cost for that high solid pumps, you know, that additional amount that if it exceeds the estimate and paying AA2S for their oversight.
So there's no recourse for us to get our legal fees back, meaning that these were errors that were not our fault? Is that correct?
That is correct, that's part of the settlement, everybody's releasing all claims and including attorney's fees and expert fees.
Sure, okay. Our next question is Rice Lake coming back to install those whatever pumps that needed to be replaced?
No, they just do concrete work.
So my follow-up to that is that why are we hiring AA2S to do replacement work when they're, they have cost us money on the legal end? I guess I just don't understand why we're continuing to move down that path if it's a decision that cost us money. Was there any discussion about going to someone else? Again, I know they're a great company and don't want to not use them, but if this is an issue, why would we go back to the person that caused the issue?
The primary reason, from my perspective anyways, and maybe Mr. Phelan can weigh in, is that AA2S provided services for this entire project. They know the project inside and out, and so you'd have to re-educate another engineer to assure yourself that these pumps comply with the plans and specifications, so it made sense, and AA2S is a good engineering firm from my perspective as well.
I think in addition, just because AA2S is the prime design firm, we want them to be responsible now for the replacement of these pumps and through their guidance, so their fingerprints are on these too, so we want to make sure that we don't inject somebody here with a small percentage, so we have any fingerprinting. So essentially why I agreed is I want them responsible at the end of the day.
Sure, that's valid, I accept that, thanks.
Great, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Mock is recused. Under item 4, information only, we have 4.1 COVID update, I believe Ms. Swanson wanted to say a few words, so, tonight. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. Thank you for entertaining a few comments this evening. As you will have noted, there wasn't a data update today because we did not receive data from the North Dakota Department of Health, but Michael and Drew did put together a summary of the past week, and I thought it would be important to point out the strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities that we have, along with some of the seven-day trends that we've been seeing each week for the last month. So you can see that the week of, between Christmas and New Year's, we had 340 cases, and last week we had 1,692. So we're definitely on a very steep trajectory for cases. However, over the weekend, the testing was lower and the cases were lower, so we think we may be experiencing somewhat of a leveling off of those cases, as has been experienced by some of the cities and states in the eastern part of the U.S. So fingers crossed there, hopefully we'll start to see a leveling off, but they're still at a very high level. Typically, hospitalizations and deaths and severe disease tend to follow those cases and those trends, so we'll be watching that information very closely, and indeed, our hospitalizations here at Altru have ticked up just a little bit. I think the concern that I have are on two fronts, one is testing and one is vaccination. We're doing great with testing numbers, however, we've had sort of a perfect storm for testing that occurred today. Our testing is really limited by the capacity of all the systems, and that includes having the instruments to perform the tests, having the supplies to do them, and having the staff and the capacity among that staff to perform those tests. And today, we found ourselves at the intersection of all those systems having some critical shortages, and this will impact our ability to get rapid results for those PCR tests like we have been getting from Altru. They've been really responsive, but unfortunately, Altru and the North Dakota Department of Health, for all the reasons that I just mentioned, are unable to process PCR tests for us this week. We'll be sending our samples to a contract lab that we've used before in North Carolina. The unfortunate thing is people won't get their results as quickly as they have been kind of accustomed to at our Fritz Pollard Athletic Center site, but we'll continue to test there, and we'll continue to encourage antigen testing, which will not be impacted by this. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out that on that summary, you can see that vaccinations administered each week has also declined from a high of the week before Christmas of 1,143 down to 179 last week. And while we know that people are fully vaccinated and boosted, there still is a large percentage of people that have not had any vaccinations or people who haven't been boosted yet. So we would just like you, in your circle of influence, and to everybody out there watching on television tonight, to continue to encourage people to become vaccinated. That is our best way of controlling this rapid transmission of Omicron, and it will also prevent future variants from emerging if we have a highly vaccinated population, excuse me. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, especially about our testing situation, or address any concerns.
Any questions for Ms. Swanson? Yes, Ms. Mock?
Where, is there a place that's still open for vaccinations or booster shots?
Yes, Grand Forks Public Health is still operating at the Grand Cities Mall Tuesday through Friday, and we base those times on when we had the highest traffic. The North Dakota Department of Health operates a pop-up clinic at Walmart on Gateway every Sunday afternoon, and then all of the clinics and pharmacies are continuing to vaccinate just as they did before. Some require appointments, but some take walk-ins as well.
And the testing is still available, just not as quick, the results just aren't as quick?
Yes, testing is still available as previously scheduled, and it's also available at healthcare organizations with appointments, and they screen for appropriateness. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Weber?
With the delay in results, do we have an idea of what people can expect if they were tested today, for instance? Because today was the first day that we're experiencing.
Today was the first day. I think we're looking at a minimum of 72 hours, in some cases with the Mako lab results, it may be longer.
Thanks.
But are we still encouraging people, if they're not feeling well, to get tested?
Yes.
Are we encouraging people because of the lack of tests and everything? Should people just isolate and stay home?
President Sandy, we still recommend that people be tested, absolutely, and especially they have symptoms, antigen testing is a good option for them. We do want people to be tested. If they are not feeling well and need to see a healthcare provider, absolutely, they should seek that care as well. However, we know that people waiting for PCR tests, if that's the only test they have, have difficulty isolating, waiting for results, and so that's a challenge, we know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight. Okay. On the, yeah, moved by Weber to adjourn, second by Dockler. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, or adjourn, thank you.